Okay, John Morse here, Montgomery County Tea Park. And we're here with Matthew Doc Dancer. He's running for Magnolia.
I said thank you for having me.
Oh, you bet. Thanks for being here. He's running for Magnolia City Council, Position 2.
Correct.
And we're March 14th, 2019, with Bill Del Fessin, and James Pyers, Black Bagley, and Larry Rogers. So as we discussed, Doc, I want you to go ahead with your opening up to five minutes, and then we'll do the Q and A after that.
Sounds good, thank you. So yes, my name is Matthew Dancer, I go by Doc. I was a medic in the military for eight years. I also got a nursing degree. When I got out of the military, I moved to the greater Houston area, Leland 249, and lived here. My wife and I decided to move out here to Magnolia, actually on this side of Magnolia, where I've pretty much resided for the last 19 years. About three years ago, we moved into the city limits, and this is when I found out about an opportunity to run for office. And ran for office, was elected, and have really enjoyed it. It's, I work in hospice, it's a full-time job, and I've always, my wife and I are both servant-type people, and I think city council is a servant-type position. We're not paid, it's volunteer. And so, you know, over the course of the last two years, it's been incredibly educational. For me, there was a huge learning curve. Never had serving on, served on boards, but nothing in city municipalities. And so, the learning curve was great, but with the help of the staff and then the council people, took advantage of training courses with TML. And, you know, just tried to do as much as I could to self-educate. And again, work with staff, we've got incredibly, incredibly seasoned staff that makes our lives a lot easier, in a lot of ways. So, you know, that's really about it. That's me. We have a family that was raised here, and luckily, they're all raised, and most of them are out of the house for most of the time, but like teenagers, they kind of come back and forth from time to time. But I'll give kids, and we just love the community and love to serve the community. So that's one more day.
Okay, great, thanks. Again, thanks for being here.
Absolutely.
Thanks for your service. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
So you're the incumbent, and you're currently serving in Position 1.
Yes, sir.
But, so why are you running for Position 2?
So, interesting question. I'm a firm believer in tournaments, in bringing in new blood, new ideas, different backgrounds, things of that nature. When I was approached by a gentleman, Daniel Miller, who has always wanted to be involved, but he's a traveling man for work, and he wasn't able to run for office. And he decided he was, he was gonna run. He had actually heard that I wasn't running. And he came to me and said, "You know, I don't want to step on toes." And I said, "Daniel, it's not about stepping on toes, I'll teach you everything I know." And then when I really started thinking about it, you know, there's an opportunity to have two relatively new people on the council. And so, when I was looking at, you know, Mr. Brown has a lot of experience. He's been, he was mayor, I think, two terms. He's been on council, he's been on code enforcement, he was an F-4 pilot in Vietnam. A widely, widely successful man. But, you know, maybe it's time for some new eyes and ears to look at the challenges that we have coming into the Magnolia area. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. Opportunity for new blood.
So who's the other gentleman that's running in Position 1? Richard, uh, Miller?
Daniel Miller, yes.
Daniel Miller. How long have you known him?
Uh, just, actually, since this, this election started out.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, he just retired, uh, I want to say it was in December.
Okay.
And so, he's running unopposed?
Correct.
Dylan? Okay. Let's see. So you're running against a well entrenched, a well experienced incumbent. What is it that you intend to do differently? You said new eyes, new blood. So what will you do differently than the person you ran against?
Well, the things that I've done over the course of the last term, and what I'll continue to do, is work very closely with the developers, as well as the staff, on coming up with best solutions. We'll also work very closely with the county commissioner, as well as the tech guy. You know, Magnolia has been strangled by having roads, and that's what's really stunned the growth of it. Those roads are starting to come through. And so now, it's an opportunity for us to work with developers and make sure that we're getting the right types of developments, the right type of housing, and bringing those into the community, as opposed to having, you know, sections and subdivisions here and there. We want Magnolia to still have its Magnoliatism. You know, it's a small-town country feel, and we want to maintain that.
Okay. And I guess by implication, you think that the incumbent has a very different vision in those areas?
Um, I don't know if it's different. I would say that there's sometimes a new school of doing things, and there's a certain level of activity and participation that I've taken advantage of, that others haven't. For example, going to Austin to talk about different issues that have come up, talking about grants, and talking to the Texas land, or the water work, you know, on opportunities for different ways to finance the infrastructure that we need to put in.
Okay. I've got a picture, but I think it's changed here.
Well, let me follow on to that a little bit of time. You mentioned you want to make sure that the right type of business is coming in, having control of that, and not infringe on some businesses' free-market rights to new businesses. I know you're really going to...
Right. I listen to the people. You know, it's my job to, to represent the people of the city. And so, I listen to the people of the city, and then what do they want, what do they need? You can't, I mean, outside of Tractor Supply, you can't buy a pair of socks. You've got to go into either Walmart, all the way down the road, in west Woodlands area, or you go down to Tom Ball. There needs to be more healthcare for senior citizens, as well as for the younger people. We've got one pediatrician. You know, so there's, there's a certain level of selection, you have a certain level of grassroots common knowledge that we don't want certain businesses in there.
How many massage parlors do you have?
Zero. My point exactly. I don't foresee a gentleman's club, or a massage parlor that's open after 6 o'clock PM. Those types of things are not things that we want in our, we have more churches almost than we have houses, and there's a reason for that. And it's a core value situation.
Your question, sir?
Now, there's, um, I'm down, right now, in Chateau Woods, where I live, and I was attending a church in Oak Ridge, and they wanted to move from the back of the shopping center to the front. And the city is very hostile to religious organizations, particularly occupying commercial property. They refused, saying that, well, they don't pay sales tax. You mentioned there were a lot of church, churches in the area. So my question is, when you look at the sales tax revenue that the city has, annual property tax, are you going to be adverse for, or encouraging, or what, additional churches building in the area, or taking up perhaps unused commercial property, that sort of thing?
No. I mean, the more, the more God we can bring into the city is great. It's, you know, it's really best, it's, it's not, I don't think it's up to us to determine where a church should be put. If you look at Greater Magnolia, it's always been that way. When you look at really the prime real estate, are all churches. And so, it's probably going to continue that way if the need is there. We service roughly 20,000 people on weekends for church services, but we only have a population in the city of about 1,800. So, I mean, yeah, we're definitely not going to hinder anyone from coming into the city from a church perspective.
I know the city council doesn't do zoning, but what's your relationship with the zoning board? How does that work?
So, we have the Planning and Zoning Commission, which we're actually in the process right now of looking at what makes the most sense from a planning perspective, long-term, on the zoning, because some of the areas are just not zoned properly, I guess is the right answer. There are certain areas that are industrial, which really should be commercial, and vice versa. So we're going through that vetting process now, actually, to see, to see what's best. And my part in that is on the commissioner, the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Ah. So what do y'all want to do with, or what do you want to do with regards to annexation?
We want to do, well, we've got to work with the people in order to do it. We've got to have their goal, but the goal...
You'd only support voluntary annexation, you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, go ahead.
So, yes, we support voluntary annexation. In fact, we just annexed one at the last city council meeting. And the goal is to annex the people that want to be annexed. If they don't want to be annexed, then we don't probably want to service them with watering and so forth. So does that answer your question?
Sure. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, along the lines of the Planning Commission, you talked about the developers coming in and working with the developers. The biggest issue within this county, and specifically within your city, has been the lack of planning for infrastructure. So if you bring in a new development, are, are you looking forward towards proper planning for infrastructure, for sewer, for drainage, and for the streets? Because you bring in a new development, 100 acres, and you've got 5,000 homes that are going in on there, and you've got now 10,000 more automobiles, where are they going to go? How are they going to get from one place to the other? Yes, there's been an expansion in the, in the roads within your city already, but what, what are you working towards on those? Are you, are you focusing on those issues?
Yes. And there's a huge focus on those issues for multiple reasons. One, to your point, in the past, it was, Magnolia grew, and it grew with a very small budget. So they kind of, I don't want to say piecemeal, because that has a negative connotation, but they did what they could with what they had at the time. Well, now we're looking at bringing 25,000, 30,000 new residents in the greater Magnolia area. That's a lot of folks. And so, how are we doing that? By working with them, with the developers, to determine, you know, what their capacity, what their needs are going to be, and then coming up with solid solutions, whether it's the developer builds it so they can control the timeframe, and then you buy it back from them, and service it, or whether they buy capacity off of current systems. It's just, it's kind of a situation that we take with each one of the developers on its own, because some of the developers have different abilities.
Is there any bond debt currently with Magnolia? If so, what's the debt for?
Uh, it's for infrastructure. Yes, there is, and it's all infrastructure.
How much is the bond?
I don't have that number in front of me, I'm sorry.
Okay. And our question here, in the general, one of the questions, what are the three main attributes that make you qualified for this position? And down at the bottom, also, you know, I'm sure in your answer, you said, "Working with surrounding cities and county officials to create a more of a global outlook and support." Explain global outlook and support.
Well, I think as the counties and the cities, we're all going to work together. And so, by having, you know, Magnolia has a kind of a history of just kind of staying Magnolia. And, but when we reach out to our friends in, you know, Plantersville, in Decker Prairie, and even Conroe, you know, I think it just makes it much more cohesive communications where, where everything starts, good, bad, or indifferent. And when you're reaching out to those different entities in the counties, you know, you can come up with more global plans that benefit everyone, as opposed to, you know, one small city trying to come up with a solution. You know, let's, let's reach out and work with our state representatives, work with whoever we can, to get the best result for the citizens.
I guess what you're, it was global, but one, I know you're going to be global. Thank you. Under budget, there were a few questions that you had to answer a lot of time earlier in the cutoff.
Yes, sir.
Under budget, let's see, will you vote to increase or reduce the annual city budget? Why? And what changes would you propose in your budget?
Well, I think it'd be almost irresponsible to suggest either at this point. If you look at our budget, it's incredibly low. We carry some debt services, but they're all related to infrastructure, which is a part of the growth that we have to have. Our tax rate hasn't moved from a local property tax in eight years. In fact, last year it went down. So, at this point, without having more revenue coming in, I think we would have, we would have to maintain a balanced budget, or a balanced tax.
You said that the tax went down? The tax rate went down? Or the...
The tax rate went from 4.79 to 4.6, I forget exactly.
But your appraisals went up, so you're still collecting more money. So the taxes didn't go down, just the tax rate went down.
The tax rate went down. Revenue actually increased.
You're still collecting.
Twenty-seven thousand dollars over the course of the year. And a lot of that had to do with, we had about 14, what do they call it, lots in Magnolia Ridge, that the developer finally came in and built out.
But their effective tax rate?
Effective tax rate.
Did not go...
Did not go down. Right.
Okay. Well, actually, have a little more time.
No, you asked, you asked. It's my turn.
My passion, my passion.
That's right. It's my passion.
Okay. You mentioned under Operation of City Government, how can they be more efficient in prospect? You said councilmen may have their volunteer positions. Well, I'm sure there are a number of paid positions. I'm not familiar with all the details there. You have city manager, what's the pay there? How much of the stuff is done in-house versus outsourcing, you know, by city employees versus contracts and so forth? So can you describe that a little bit there, and talk about efficiency and effectiveness in that context?
Okay. So, you know, being two years into this, I don't have a lot of experience. I do have a lot of management experience. And with, with Paul Mendy, he's our administrator, he runs a very, very tight crew. Lynn is our secretary, which we kind of have to have one of those. Tom Ross is a contract employee that's paid for out of three different funds. So it's not just the city, it's AMV as well. So we're kind of cutting costs, we're sharing costs there. We have one admin person that handles the water. And the water, the revenue from the water actually pays for that position. And Ms. Beverly is our HR, accounts management, and half a dozen other things. So, to reduce overall operational labor, I don't know that we could at this point. As big as the city is, with as many challenges as we have from an infrastructure perspective, I think they're running about as lean as we're put.
Okay. So you obviously do have some contracts for some city services, standard routine city services.
Engineering.
Okay. Is that any of those that should be brought in-house, for instance?
You know, we've actually looked at code enforcement, for example. We have a code enforcement officer, we also have an inspector. You know, we look at this stuff about once a year to find out, is it, have we grown to the point where we need an inspector? And the answer is, you know, we don't have enough work to say, okay, line item by line item, this is what we paid out last year, and if we paid, if we could find somebody that could do it off of a salary, it would be cheaper. And so, our contract services are a much more effective way to run things than hiring new employees.
So, in your opinion, staffing and contracts are right where they should be?
For now, yes.
Okay. James?
Now, I'm understanding correctly from wrong, is that by and large, I think it was told in every instance, the city council currently had unanimous votes. Is that true? There really hasn't been much disagreement among the city council members? Or there was, when was the last time somebody voted no, or against the others? I have a follow-up question to that.
Good question, and I can't really answer it because my memory serves me as not very often. Is there an objection?
So my question then is, on that very point, since you're running, you're already incumbent, you're running against an incumbent in another position, and let's say you win, what changes? I mean, if y'all are already voting cohesively, how does your moving into this position change anything differently, or for the better, or worse?
Well, I think it allows another person to come in, being in Position 1. And so, that person may object, may not object, I can't speak to that. And the reason that, in my belief, that council is typically voting in the same direction is because the homework, and I know myself, I don't read the agenda the day before the meetings. You know, I've read the agenda a week or so before, and I'm involved with the city, with the staff enough to be able to be educated on the decisions, and if they're best for the city, they're not. And most things that aren't good for the city don't end up on the agenda.
Hmm. So then, if you're not elected, I mean, it doesn't sound like it's going to have a negative effect. I mean, I don't know, maybe the other guy's been lucky enough to vote the correct way every time without doing research, you do. But you see the point.
I do see your point.
I mean, if I'm watching, trying to decide who to vote for, I don't see a difference, or they might not see a difference per se.
And you're absolutely right. And I don't, I'll be honest, and I don't have enough experience, as many of you do, to answer that question, other than...
You're nice, sir.
He likes tournaments.
That's true.
As a matter of principle.
One, real quick question. You're in hospice.
Yes.
Is that hospital, nursery home? What is that?
I work with a lot of communities and people in their homes.
Okay.
And so, and hospice strictly deals with helping patients and families through that end of life.
Right.
And, I mean, it's going to happen to all of us. It's how we do it that makes the difference. As a nurse, back 100 years ago, I was watching a lot of family members that were, you know, sitting by mom's bedside, you know, take one more, do one, do one more therapy, and, you know, mom was telling them, "I'm tired, I don't want to do this anymore." And so, helping that family transition and accept that, "Look, mom's passing, let's, let's have real conversations, let's talk about..."
That has to be very tiring.
It's actually...
Draining, very draining.
It's very rosy. Very rosy. My wife and I both do it and love it, because we're all going to pass.
Yeah.
And we can help the family do it comfortably and grieve, and...
Well, thank you.
Absolutely.
If I can get a talk to her, for sure.
There was a few questions that you had on the sheet that you may have answered, but they're not showing up online. Should salaried employees be paid overtime? And if so, should there be a limit on, on how much?
If you're salaried, you're salaried. You're...
Maybe, he did answer that.
One above it.
Right, I know, but I'm just wanting to know if there's any stipulation in there at all. So, y'all weren't affected by Harvey as much as we were in the east side.
Correct.
But if we had another Harvey, then you've got people working overtime. Are you going to pay them, or do you feel that they should be getting paid overtime for that? Or would they get comp time for that? Or if you don't believe that they should get overtime, hey, how do you deal with that? Because it's normal in industry to get, to work an extra 20 hours, say 60-hour week, instead of a 40-hour week, and not, not get compensated for it. That's why you're on salary.
Right.
But during an emergency situation, what would you do?
You know, I think it'd have to be a case-by-case basis, and how much time is dedicated? You know, we're talking about hours, days, weeks. But for the most part, and I'm a salaried employee, if the phone rings, I answer it. You know, tomorrow, I'm meeting with a group of families at a senior community, talk about hospice, 8:00 at night. You know, that's just what, that's why you're a salaried employee. If you want an hourly rate overtime, you get an hourly job.
Right. But I'm just talking about emergencies.
Yeah.
Emergency situations.
Like you said, it'd have to be a case-by-case basis. And, you know, the fires that we experienced out of Magnolia was for an extremely long period of time.
Yes, yes.
You know, so that's a little bit of an extenuating circumstance, everyone would have to evaluate at that time.
Your answer was just flat-out no, though, so I wanted to find out if there were...
There's always, I don't know, I see appearances, because that's such a word, like, and there's always situations, I think, that we'd have to look at.
So this goes along with, with that, with employees, and whether or not they should be taking home city vehicles? And you said it just, it depends. Should the city manager have a car to be able to take home? Should Public Works have a vehicle to take home? Should city councilmen have a vehicle to take home? I'm just saying, you know, you said it depends.
Yeah.
I'd like to know a little bit more why.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
And tell me the reasoning if there, what makes them any different than any other employee to be able to get to the office to be able to do their job?
Right. So, and I, thank you for helping me clarify that, because there are certain positions that are salaried, one, and two, they have emergency duties. So, yes, they should have a vehicle so that if they're called out in the middle of the night, Plan Ops, for example, you know, from a timing perspective, it doesn't make sense for them to drive from there to the shop to get their truck to drive over to the other city. We're losing time. In most cases, it's either water, which is costly, it's electrical, it's sewer, it's something that, it's, it's time-sensitive. Same thing with, you know, police chiefs and lieutenants and things like that, when there's an emergency. They're loading up and going. So, yeah, I think it's a, it's a necessary for some positions. Now, should the secretary have one? No, not necessarily, because she doesn't have that same emergency response job description.
Okay. All right. What is the current budget for the city?
The current budget is 3.9 a bunch of times I was.
Now, should I ask this first? You're the area manager for educating the community around hospice, but like you said, you go out at night to a community center or...
Whenever they need me.
Yes, and that's, so that's, that's, is your wife in the same? Great. All right. And the Phil's House would pay, they'll have some insurance or vehicles or not?
Parks. No, parks, no.
No. Okay. Are you familiar with the water rate going up?
The water rate is going up and is also under review.
Is your, can you explain why it's, why it has gone up?
Simply because it was, well, for a few reasons, and for a few reasons due to litigation that I can't speak about. But the rates are, were going up because the city was running the red consistently. It's simple that it hadn't been going up for so long, that it's like anything else, there's, there's more cost, there's more, you know, any business, you don't typically see a product stay the same price for maybe 10 years.
There, I heard something about water rates going up for churches and schools and everything to quite a big jump. So is that across the world increases, or is that just for churches and schools?
It's going to be phased, and it's across the world.
To residential?
Residential as well. That being said, we are in the process of getting a master water plan together, and because the last one, we won up the figures from 2011. There's been so many changes since then, that we realize that we need to redress everything. So even though the current rates that we have adopted may change.
While we're on the water, do you know how much money did y'all pay to San Jacinto River Authority, or to Lone Star Ground Water for, for the water that you're getting from them?
I don't have a figure, but even if I did, I believe where litigation was done as well. So we'll be able to answer that question.
With the Brown district or SCRA?
Both. Both?
Both?
I believe. Again, I played along a little bit in time that...
Are you getting services from, I mean, you should know this as a council member currently.
Right. Yeah, we are getting services from Lone Star, as well as San Jacinto.
What, what, water-wise?
Yes. Yeah, we pay a tax.
You pay a tax, but are you... You pay a tax, but are you getting water?
We're using groundwater.
You're not getting, so again, you're not getting any services from them, but you're paying them, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That would be a question that's beyond my pay grade.
Is that in litigation right now?
Who's that?
Me.
I said I'd butt it in.
As usual.
Lost circle of rotation.
Yeah. You know what the tax rate is for the city? Did you say that?
Yes.
What is that?
.465.
Okay, and the...
You're referring to the property tax?
And property tax.
That's property tax, yes.
Oh, okay, what's the sales tax rate there?
The same as the state.
Same as the state?
The state's portion is six and a quarter.
Correct. So their overall tax rate is 8%.
Okay, so you'd be... 1.75. Okay, so... So the question is, do you know how much revenue is derived from each? I don't know if you brought that with you. Do you think it'd be a good idea to broaden either or both of that to increase revenues?
I'm not a big fan of raising taxes.
Nobody is. There are no excuses there.
Well...
Build a given office.
AOC is.
You know, I just don't see the value in raising taxes. If we, if we had more services, more businesses, more things like that, the taxes for revenue would go up. So why would we want to raise taxes?
Just below that, debt. What is the city's bond rating? And you said that is a 5.
No, I completely misquoted that, and I apologize. We actually just got upgraded to a double, a 2A minus from S and B. That's, I kind of felt bad when you got this after I sent it, because I thought it was a draft form. And I didn't get a chance to go back and spell check it, grammar, or anything. I was like, oh my gosh, this guy's going to think I'm an employee. But you still think that, but...
Well...
We'll see, we'll get, hang on before you jump in. We've been about how much? We've been 30 minutes. 30 minutes, so we've got 15 minutes.
That was kind of a lead-in to, and building up on, you know, the thing. There were four questions that you didn't have answered. And I guess one of the thoughts, based in my mind, is if I don't have time to answer the questions, how do you have time to serve and see a council? So, address it from that perspective as to why those were unanswered, or whatever the reason is.
Right. So, one of it was misunderstanding, is when, when I read it, I read it, it was trying to get it done by 6:00 on Sunday, not, that was the final cutoff. And so, I went through, and I wanted to make sure that the facts were correct before I put things in there. And so, I left a blank. And then, when I reached out to John, I found out otherwise.
Put off your hands. Typical John. Okay. On a separate subject.
Yes.
The beloved Woodlands Parkway extension.
Yes.
What, what are your thoughts on that? Are you in favor of that? Why, why is it a good idea? Why is it a bad idea? Talk to us about it.
And who should pay for it?
And who should pay for it? Honestly, it's already done. So is there, how much can we talk about it?
The Woodlands Parkway extension?
Are we talking the Woodlands Parkway extension? I'm sorry. Different road. Sorry, I heard Aggie Parkway. The Woodlands Parkway extension. I don't, is that going to come to Magnolia?
Depends on who you talk to, I guess.
I guess so.
Should it?
I don't see why. I don't see whereable, to be honest with you. But to be quite honest, I haven't really spent that much time educating myself because it's not a city topic that's going, it's more of a county topic.
Well, there was...
Yeah, but you work at surrounding jurisdictions, you told us so yourself.
I do, but I don't know every fact on every, every area.
There was elected rep that...
Former.
Former elected rep, okay.
Former elected rep that said that was going to be a direct line from the Walmart at 2978 in Woodlands Parkway to A and N. Except it was going to the southwest, so maybe she didn't know where we're actually.
This way.
Yeah.
Like a big D or checkmark.
It was going to the southwest, wasn't going up to A and N. But if they build that, who do you think should pay for that? I mean, is that the county's responsibility, a developer? You said you work with developers a lot. What's your view on that?
I mean, that would have to be a, with that stretch of a road going in that area, that would have to be a county situation. The city certainly shouldn't be responsible for it because it's, it's just not a city road. It's a county road. Or state road. But that's why I don't think they should pay for it, but it's not going to be a city.
What about developers?
They would benefit from it. Chances of getting that many developers together on the same page to build it, I don't know how that would possibly work because we're talking about such a long drawout. Is it 13, about 13 miles in between where it is now to hit the Aggie Parkway?
About, yeah.
I see that as a huge challenge. Not that it couldn't be done, but it'd be interesting. Love to see another cable.
Yeah, Shenandoah, interestingly, is a sidebar that they are building. How long is stated for that they have to build a mile? There's going to be four entities in that. Shenandoah, San Moon, five. Shenandoah, San Moon.
City of Congress. Two counties.
The hosp and the hospital.
County and the hospital.
Yeah, part of that property is owned by Methodist Hospital.
It's only...
Well, part is precinct four, commissioner, county commissioner, the other is precinct two. No, no.
No, it's all in precinct four.
It is, I know.
Yeah. It's all in precinct four.
Okay. Who's that?
Me. There's legislation now going out in the state to basically ban or get rid of red light cameras. I noticed in your city budget, you get like $500,000, and after you pay everybody off, you know, whoever processes it in the state, you get like 300, you get $390,000 left. And that's approaching like 15% of your, 20% of your budget. So what would you do to fill that gap if that happens this year?
Well, if that happened this year, unfortunately, we would have to reduce our police force.
You'd cut expenses, you're saying?
Correct.
How many are in your police force now?
How many?
Yeah, how many? Yeah, sorry.
I think we're, we've had some change over here recently. I think we're back to 17 officers.
Okay.
So are you for or against removing the red light cameras?
I'm actually for red light cameras, they keep the city safe. And they supply more officers to bus drivers and come through, as you can see by the reports that we put out.
So the statistics supported the fact that it's safer with the red light cameras than without?
It's okay, say it again, I'm sorry.
I have the statistics showing that it's safer with the red light cameras than without.
I haven't read a statistic that said specifically the red light camera makes them safer. I know the people that live in the city know the red light camera, and they do stop at that intersection. I also know that it provides equipment and soldiers on the ground, or officers on the ground, which are patrolling, which are, you know, getting with the kids, getting with the people to make sure that everyone's safe.
Well, half the million, doesn't sound like everybody by any means that they're there.
Do you know if that's mostly locals or people outside the city?
It's predominantly people from outside the city.
That's awfully fortunate.
You evil Magnolians.
Yes, yes, evil Magnolians.
First cousins of Speedcap. I mean, you know, that could be going by the ways.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's something that we've looked at, we've talked about, and we've talked to the police chief, and we're trying to come up with, you know, how do we plan for this if it does? But that would, I would have to let him speak to that.
So we've talked about taxes. There's a, there was a bill put through during the last legislative session, and hopefully again, this one to do away with property taxes. From the size of your city, comparison to a lot of others, do you feel it possible that y'all can do away with property taxes within the city and still, and still operate? You may have to increase your, your sales tax, but then again, you may not. Staff, the city of Stafford has not had to increase sales tax, and they've done away with, with their property tax. And they're doing quite well, and they've been doing this for years.
Right. So I think with the, with the current situation that we have in Magnolia, I think, I don't think that it would be possible, I think the town would strengthen itself. We don't have a lot of retail, we don't have a lot of industry. You know, we get taxes from infrastructure, franchise, things of that nature. But we have homes and churches. That's our tax base.
Yeah, but the churches don't pay property taxes.
Exactly.
So you have...
If we didn't have churches and we didn't have residents paying, we'd have a much smaller budget.
So, did you learn about the American Revolution in school?
Yes.
Do you know what one of the big issues was with, during the revolution?
Taxation.
Exactly.
Yes.
Because the king owned all of the land, and the king still owns the land. We won a battle, we won a war to get our independence and our freedom. And we don't have it anymore. But you as a tax man, and you think that it's still okay?
Not that it's okay, it's a necessary equal now. I would love to get in that position, and that's why we try to get more and more retail into the area. So do you raise sales tax to offset real estate tax? You're still paying a tax.
You are still paying a tax, but you decide what you want to pay the tax on, like what you purchase.
That's true.
You have no choice when it's your property, your home.
Other than to move to a place that doesn't have property tax.
Exactly.
Along that line, do you, can you look in your crystal ball? Is there anything that works, any new developments, or any new subdues coming in?
So, yes, the SPUR 149 and 1488, there's an H U B that's, the H U B has secured, the developer has secured the property. But yes, they are coming in, it's going to be kind of like the one on 336 out there. We've also got the corner there by Walgreens, which is going to be a big box commercial. We have San Jaeger with the Audubon coming in with roughly $8,000 in units, which quite good, that's going to be commercial as well to support, he's doing one of his typical master plant. We have no brick, that's coming in with 500 units.
So you've got a lot, like the cameras, if they go away, that would certainly...
Absolutely.
Replace it.
Absolutely.
One other question, a big deal is, do you own your property? Or do you operate a business in Marin County? They said I live in Marin County, but in the city of Marin County. And we don't own any other property. I'm assuming that you do own a home in Marin County, and the other property you don't?
Yeah, we don't own anything outside of Marin County. We don't, we just start right there. That I'm aware of. I might have that uncle out there somewhere that's going to loan me something at this point.
Let me know when you actually own it.
When I actually own it?
Property tax.
When the property taxes go.
When the property taxes go.
All jurisdictions.
Okay, so there's one more question, and it was not on your questionnaire. I don't know why it didn't... Well, it didn't pull over, and I'm going to read it from the gentleman that was in here before you because it is on his.
Okay.
Have you ever been convicted as a result, have you ever been convicted as a result of arrest, ever had any tax liens, and so do start and resolution dates?
No.
Okay, so no, no convictions and no tax liens?
So, just to clarify on that, sorry, when you say convictions, are you talking about financial convictions of taxpayers? Or convictions in general of...
Convict, yeah, convictions in general as a result of arrest. And tax, any tax liens whatsoever.
So no tax liens, and yes, I was arrested May 18th of last year for DUI, which I should be aware of. So that's...
Were you convicted of it, though?
Yeah, it was first offense. Didn't recobate it, did all that stuff, still in the courts and entities associated with it, so...
We made a mistake.
All right, anybody else?
One of the questions later on was, would you vote in favor of spousal benefits for same-sex partners for your city employees? And you said, "We will continue to follow the state's direction on this matter." What do you understand the state's direction to be on this matter?
State doesn't have a direction in this matter.
Okay, so then what would you do?
There's not really, and my understanding, until there's a federal and a state, there's, we don't have a lot of leverage on that, it's not something that we can come up against.
If one of your council members voted on ordinance to do such, what would you do?
I think we would have to look at all the factors that come into it. It's not just a random yes or no.
Okay. I'll go along on that, with that, kind of, but on the side. Separation of church and state, we're seeing monuments that are taken down within the state, with other states. I believe Magnolia has a Christmas burn, do they? Do you have an issue? Do you believe that if the people so wanted, do you believe it's okay for them to have a nativity scene on the city property?
Somebody else? So that brings us to the end, and you have up to five minutes if you'd like to for a closing.
Well, we may have a pretty few words, but I don't think I'll need five minutes. I just want to say thank you all. I do appreciate this opportunity. Hope to answer the questions to your liking, and look forward to serving in the next two years. And we'll go from there. See how much new blood we can bring in.
You're still on, you want to let them know anything?
Please elect me for position two, Magnolia City Council. Thank you.